My title, it's going live now.
Okay, I'm getting that message. Are we live?
It appears to be.
It looks like we're live.
Well, good morning. Welcome to the July 18th, 2020, meeting of the Lake Lemon Conservancy District. Appreciate you guys taking time out of a Saturday. Fourth Board members and free holders to be with us. Have gotten some comments on some problems with accessibility in terms of our Zoom and YouTube format. So we've tried hard to tweak some things this week. Who knew we would go on this long in a virtual format? I was just reading my notes in May saying, see you at the June meeting at the Shelter House, albeit no picnic. And here we are still getting advice from our, our insurance counsel that this is the right way. And our governor, of course, this is the right and safest way to conduct meetings. So we missed seeing you all in person. Hopefully you will have better chance to comment and we will try to read your comments verbatim today. On two accounts, there'll be two public comment sections. One after Agenda Item Four, which is the public hearing on the drawings and specs for the sediment management project. And then we will have our usual public comment at the end. I did read a kind of a funny thing. Nothing replaces face-to-face meetings. Knew again that we would be in this situation for so long. It has been said that virtual meetings will replace in-person meetings. When virtual honeymoons replace in-person honeymoons. I thought that was kind of cute in my little Roberts Rules directive. So we're doing the best we can. Bear with us and hopefully this won't go on too much longer. With that, I would request a discussion and approval of the June 24th Board Meeting Minutes. Oh, by the way, we will do a roll call vote at each time we need to. Please just raise your hand to speak and I will try to.
Pam?
Yes. Yes, ma'am.
Thing I wondered is when we have discussion about like that water testing and then Sarah says she's going to do something, go back with Adam and give us recommendations, should that be part of the minutes that we're expecting something back? That would kind of be the only, that was my only comment about the minutes. And maybe it's just a matter of our procedure and how we write them.
Could add that in there.
That's a good question. I think we should add that because that's what we did decide. That's fair. Sure. Any other thoughts on the minutes from June 24th? Nope. Okay. I may I please have a motion then to approve as corrected or as added the June 24 minutes?
I'll make that move.
Thank you, Debbie. May I have a second? Mary Jane, thank you. All right. It has been moved and seconded. Motion carries. All right. Number three, Michael B. Treasurers Report.
Don't we have to vote, Pam?
Oh, I'm sorry. We didn't vote. I have to do my roll call thing. Okay. I apologize. Yes, we need to vote. I vote aye. Mary Jane?
Aye.
Les?
Aye.
Deborah?
Aye.
Michael B?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries. Thank you, Mary Jane. You're always keeping me honest. Okay, Treasurers Report.
We had a good month. Thank you, Madam Chair. We had a good month. Brown County Monroe County Taxes came in. Total income for June, $255,695. And so again, the taxes, we had water craft permits at $26,979. Park admission fees, $33,516. That beach has been crowded. And total expenses, $60,113 for total net income, $195,582 for the month. A pretty good month. So with that said, if there's no discussion, I would entertain a motion to approve the report of claims for June 2020. Oh, sorry, Deborah.
I just want to point out, it's really hard for me to look at these financials because you look at like just one month and how are we compared to budget? So I just want to kind of commend everybody, pat on the back. Because if you look at year-to-date how we're doing versus year-to-date last year, it's pretty astounding. I mean, it's more than a $50,000 increase. And I was shocked to see that water permits were up so much and that park admissions were up and of course, private dredging. So I just, you know, kudos to whoever's responsible. But it, you know, not just the month, Mike, but it's just like year-to-date. We saw a lot better results than what I thought we would.
I was, I was also very impressed with, with the month of June. I concur.
Yeah, I think everybody was biting at the bit to get outside and recreate after being stuck inside for so long. And what we do notice is a lot of the people that buy annual passes, you know, whether they purchased the pass in February, March, or two months later, they're still going to buy the pass. So I think that helped out a lot. And then just the nice weather for the beach.
Very good. All right. Mike, that, that ends your.
Well, Madam Chair.
For motion, sorry. You asked for a motion.
Thank you.
Don't move.
Don't move. Mary Jane, second please. Thank you, Debbie.
Roll call vote. Do you want me to do it, Madam Chair?
Sure. Give me, give me a rest. I'm so tired.
You begin, Madam Chair. All in, no discussion, all in favor to approve a report of claims. Madam Chair, you first.
Aye.
Vice Chair?
Aye.
Deborah?
Aye.
Les?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. So the ayes have it. Lawrenceville vouchers approved for June of 2020. Back to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mike. All right. That brings us to Agenda Item Four, which is sort of a little hearing within a meeting. The public hearing on the drawings and specs and cost estimates for our long-awaited sediment management project. And Adam has worked hard on a PowerPoint that he's going to be able to share to help walk us through this process, which seems like it's taken a long time, but is finally coming to fruition. Adam?
There's people beating on the door and the window. I think they thought the meeting was here and not online.
Oh dear. You need.
Where's those two deputies at?
I know. Let me go ahead and pull the PowerPoint presentation. What I will do is go ahead and share the screen and let me know once you see it.
Do you need to deal with the people at the door?
I told Alex up there at the gatehouse, let him know that it's online. So I don't think there's a whole lot.
Okay. I see it.
You guys can see the project or see the?
Yeah. Yes.
All right.
You get a confirmation that our public can see this as well on the YouTube feed?
It's got a delay, so I'm looking.
Okay, thanks, Alex.
Yeah, I see it on the feed there.
Yep, it's up.
Terrific. Nice work.
All right. So we'll go ahead and get started on it. And this is just going to be the beginning part of the public hearing. What the presentation is going to show is a little bit of the history of where we started, what we're looking at, how we got to the process and methodology that we're going to be using for dredging, and then kind of what the next steps are. This will be the initial portion of the public hearing on construction drawings, specifications and cost estimates for the Lake Lemon Sediment Management Project. The outline, again, will do purpose, will do history of the sediment problem, the project evolution, our methods, implementation, and then the financing with the final part of the discussion. So the project purpose, this is when we really came up with the initial project to try to state what we were hoping to accomplish. And the project purpose was to utilize science-based management to reduce, remove and consolidate sediment loading within Lake Lemon and the tributaries. Part of that included enhancing wetland functionality, which means increasing the ability of the wetlands to capture sediment and store it there, and increased sediment accretion, which is actually the buildup of the sediment in a specific location rather than everywhere. Hopefully, we plan to reduce impacts and rates of sedimentation within the lake and increase efficiency and longevity of our in-house operation. So a little bit of the history of sedimentation in Lake Lemon. Lake Lemon was built in 1955, essentially when it was online and fully functioning. When they built the lake and when they build other man-made lakes, reservoirs, there is an inherent life expectancy of the lake. So they started doing sediment testing pretty early on. And the reason there is a life expectancy is because when you dam a creek that was previously land and not water, Mother Nature wants to return it back to where it was. Some of the northern natural lakes will be around for, you know, thousands of years because they were formed by glaciers. But when you dig a creek, there's an inherent sediment issue to try to return that to a stable environment, which is the creek. The first record that we have of a sedimentation study is from 1974, called Sedimentation Lake Lemon Monroe County, Indiana. And at this time, they estimated the sedimentation rate just over 40,000 cubic yards per year. In that report, they estimated that the nominal life estimate for the East End is 80 years. What they classified as the East End and where they did some of their sampling in this projection is what they call RL8. So this is the line where they're basing the East End off, was essentially Point Idolon, straight down to Solomon Harbor. So they said that there there'd be about an estimated life expectancy of 80 years. Here we are, 65 years into the lake and we're starting to see, you know, almost how accurate they were. The rate seems to be a little bit quicker because we do know this line right here, almost a little bit west of, but denotes where the vegetation line is now. So this is a digitized version of the, oh, I want one more. Here's the 1974 data. It's a digitized version of the bathymetry or the lake depth. What we see here on the eastern end around the edges, this white is zero to five foot. Then as you get darker, you have deeper and greater depths. So we kind of see back from here, even in 1974, that east of Point Idolon and that main bay was less than five feet of water. The land in this area was not quite there. However, we didn't have really good aerial maps to project this on at the time. So next we'll go from 1974 to our second bathymetric study that was done, and that's in 2004. And again, we'll look at this eastern edge here and kind of see where the water depth is decreasing. And that can be associated with a delta formation and moving out. I'll jump back and forth between the two again. So here's 1974. You can kind of see where there is some areas greater than five foot of depth of water. By 2004, there's nothing greater than five foot depth in this area. Next we have the 2014. And on this bathymetric study, there's not a whole lot of change to the north. But we start to see is this point of land, which we can see the lotus there, starting to bloom now, actually treated on Monday. But you start to see where the sediment is forming additional delta space right where Bean Blossom Creek enters into the lake. And so again, from 2004 to 14, we really noticed this area right here popping up pretty quick. After 2014, our last bathymetric study was in 2019. And 2019, you can see again, the greater development of the spit of land forming than the decrease in depth in that eastern bay. So 2014 to 2019, that delta is really continuing to move out. And you can also start to see where the original creek channels are beginning to fill in at the deepest points. And the sediment that makes it into the lake that's real fine will generally find its way to the deepest point. So as I flip back through the slides, I want you to take a look from 1974 at the original creek channel, the reduction in depth as we move forward into history. So you can kind of see that eastern to westward sediment migration that's occurring. Now, I'll take a sip of water. Now, while those visuals are pretty good at showing the actual depths relative to the area, next we're going to focus on the eastern edge and some aerial photography that we have. I mean, to really drive home the issue that's going on. So here we have two historical photos, one from 1963, one from 1998. And what we really noticed here is there did not seem to be an entire, a whole lot of change as far as land formation. You know, you can't see what's going on under the water here. But if we take Little Africa as a reference point, as we move through these aerial photos, what we do notice is on this northern edge, we start to see a little bit of land formation. And then just north of Chitwood, we started to see some land formation forming here. And this is really the first time there was any land north of Little Africa. But not a whole lot of change between 1963 and 1998. As we move forward, we really start noticing big changes. And there's quite a bit of correlation with increased rain events in the winter time. Not as much icing and freezing going on. But from 1998 to almost just under a decade later, later, 2007, and we'll jump back between the two again. Hardly anything above Little Africa. Nine years later, we start to have what I've referred to as the wishbone forming just north of Little Africa. So we see new land here and also land starting to form here. This must be a fall picture because there is lotus in bloom. But again, 1998, hardly anything. One decade later, we see massive changes with the sediment coming in. As we move to the 2014 aerials, let's still keep focused kind of in this Little Africa area for reference. Or I guess this will be a 2015 aerial, the bathymetric was in 2014. What we start to notice is the full formation of that kind of wishbone island or landmass. And then we also start to see the formation of trees and a spit of land forming off the tip of Little Africa. So between 2007, there was really nothing there, just a little bit of lotus. 2015 had the land formation and the full wishbone formation. And then 2019, this was in February 2019, after we had those crazy storms, we got some aerial photography taken from a pilot that we hired. And you can really see the land formation coming off the wishbone and that Little Africa area. And then also to the northern part, you can see some land formation just east of Idolon. And you can actually see that out there with your naked eye. Now you're starting to see some cattails, willows and other types of transitional species forming. So the rate really in the past decade has increased tremendously. And I think we can remember in 2008, we had the 100-year flood. 2018, we had a big year flood. 2019, in February, again, we had a flood that inundated Aqua Isle, Dorothy Lane and all these type of areas. So the frequency and the intensity of these rain events during the winter time are really starting to happen more frequently. And what that really does provides a big issue for the sedimentation rate. Because instead of the land being fully saturated with water and frozen and locked up for a three to four month period of a time, what you actually have happening is the freeze thaw process really breaks up this land in the winter time. Then when we get these big torrential downpours, it washes all that sediment off. That's some freshly destabilized. And this is not looking like it's going to decrease anytime soon. But what's not going to decrease is the trend that we are seeing in climate and the sedimentation. This is from a 2018 study entitled Aquatic Ecosystems and the Shifting Indiana Climate. This is from Purdue University. And actually on our Facebook page, I have been linking to some recent discussions that were going on from Purdue, some live feeds, in case anybody's interested in following the science that's going on. But with what they're seeing and trending and the predictions fall into a couple of different categories, and these all have impacts on lakes, especially reservoirs that have inherent sedimentation issues. One is they're estimating that by mid-century, air temperatures will rise by five to six degrees. And they're saying about 2050 for mid-century. Water temperatures in streams, rivers and lakes will increase and duration and extent of ice cover will decline. I think we've noticed that here on the lake, I believe the last time I went ice fishing was in 2014 on Lake Lemon. And last year, we had no more than one inch of ice and probably about a third of the lake. And we never even fully locked up last year. Now, this has impacts on both vegetation control and sedimentation. As far as vegetation control, one of the reasons that we would historically do drawdowns is to try to get a vegetation kill. If you have a long-term deep freeze, it'll kill off the root structures on vegetation, killing the plants and you're going to have to spray them the next year. However, without the long-duration freezes anymore, that, that's not really feasible to use as a management method. Next, I have the changes, changes in timing, intensity and amount of Indiana's precipitation and the effects that'll have.
Pause for a dramatic effect. We might have lost him. He was having some issues with.
Yeah, we, I don't have him, his.
Yeah.
Speech anymore. I've got the screen. How about you all?
I, I.
I don't see him.
I don't see him. I don't hear him. Should, should one of us text him or does he know what's going on?
Let me.
Yeah.
Can you do that, Alex?
Yeah, I'll get it.
Well, it looks like he's coming back.
You guys got me again?
Yeah.
Thank you. Where did, where did you lose me at? And I'll go back to.
Climate predictions, climate predictions you had just started.
The second bullet point on that.
Precipitation changes.
All right. Let me jump back and I'll share the screen again. It's a lot for this laptop to handle. All right. Is it showing on the screen?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right.
Is our, is our audience, our public able to see, Alex?
They will soon.
Okay, let us know.
All right. We good to go, Alex?
I mean, it'll catch up to you.
All right.
It's on there now.
So we'll jump to the, the second bullet point, which is changing, changes in timing, intensity and amount of precipitation. And what we're seeing is an increase in frequency of high-intensity precipitation events. So the climate is becoming wetter in general, but we're also having more intense rains on a greater frequency, which we've been seeing in these kind of, you know, January, February, March rains that we've had where this come down incredibly intense and just massive amounts of sediment coming into the lake. Now, what you're going to have, one of the biggest impacts that you're going to have on these is wetland flooding. And I believe we have been seeing that in some of the eastern portions along Aqua Isle and the residences there. And the reason that this says is wetlands store water. They're there to buffer water. They absorb water and dry seasons, they leach water into the lake and surrounding areas. Other times they store it. So they slow down the flow. And with what we have, the spillway, while we generally get back to our normal pool elevations for water level relatively quick, during these high-intensity rains, we will see the water level rise and then come back down. There's not really much we can control about that. There has been questions in the past about utilizing the sluice gate. The 40-inch pipe really isn't going to do anything over that 100-yard spillway once we're above normal pool. So something to look at is increased frequency of intense precipitation of events and the associated floodings and wetlands and lowlands that's associated with. Next, our Indiana stream flows are expected to become more variable. And again, this kind of goes with the changing in frequency and intensity of precipitation events. If you have short-term, high-intensity stream or rain events, you're going to have really flashy strains. They're going to rise real quick, which is when they have the most erosive force to eat at the banks. And then they're also going to come down real quick. So while they're short-lived, the streams become more flashy instead of a steady flow. Finally, the increase of risk of human-derived nutrients entering Indiana waterways. And why they utilize nutrients for that, that can also be used as a qualifier for sedimentation. One of the biggest transitional pathways and migratory pathways for nutrients is to actually soar to the dirt particles and then actually travel downstream with that. So with the intense precipitation, we'll have increased nutrients. If you do have a lot of agriculture and farmland in the watershed, those nutrients do increase risk for algae blooms, increase vegetation growth by providing the limiting nutrients to that. That also can spell out more, more sedimentation during these high-intensity events. So the, the need is there. The sediment problem is, it's not, not being reduced amount of loading that we're seeing. So we really had to look into changing how we are dealing with this so we can stay ahead of this. And one thing to remember too is these life expectancies for reservoirs, that's assuming no input in management projects or practices. So the more management and the higher efficiency that we can have, you know, the longer we can push back the life expectancy and the usability of the reservoir. So the project evolution. We'll jump into, and this is kind of just how we got to where we are and what we're going to do. First of all, Lake Lemon Conservancy District was formed for two purposes. There's five potential purposes for the formation of conservancy districts, including fire districts, water reservoirs, flood control, recreation and irrigation, I believe is the fifth one. Now, we were formed for water quality and recreational use of the lake. So water quality refers to it being used as a potential backup water supply if the need were to arise. And that comes into our vegetation control, nutrient monitoring, algae monitoring, really kind of, you know, checking to see what quality the lake is in. And then the recreational use of the lake, and this is to maintain it for swimming, boating and fishing are the three recreational standards that are utilized. I'm just going to interject in here too, on the flooding issue is flood control lakes do not have spillways. Flood control lakes have sluice gates, emergency spillways if waters get extremely high. But flood control lakes are designed to stop flooding downstream of lakes. And this is why Lake Monroe can have a potentially 18-foot rise in their pool elevation levels before going over the emergency spillway. If you want to prevent flooding upstream, you don't put a dam in the stream. And that just inherently increases the risk of flooding because you're capturing water. Flood can, flood control is, works downstream and it's not an upstream management practice. First, we had in 2017, we're starting to assess what the potential actions were. This graphic is from a KCI Sediment Management Alternatives report that was done. And really what we looked at was four different alternatives. One was no action and why that is best for water quality because it allows the vegetation growth. It's not very good for recreation or utilization of the lake. Alternative two is dredging removal, essentially just straight dredging of the eastern bay. Alternative three was in-place management, which we looked at, and that would be essentially storing the sediment in lake, creating islands, creating storage within the lake. And the number four is alternative hybrid removal and management approach. What we ultimately decided was to look at these hybrid removal and management with the goal being, we remove sediment, we decrease the amount of sediment that's entering the lake and we increase the amount of storage of sediment in the existing wetlands and delta. From KCI, this was a kind of off, off a hit projection of what the delta could potentially look like in '24, assuming no maintenance activities were implemented. And we just continued with the access dredging that we were doing. Now on this, while it was kind of off the cusp, we actually are seeing in these delta areas, the land formation that has happened. And then we're starting to see lotus out in these areas here. I mean, so assuming nothing happens, this delta is going to continue to migrate westward. After the KCI study, what we did was we started to look into getting with a contracting agency to figure out what our designs and potential management practices would be. This led us into the phase when we worked with Shrewsbury and actually came up with our sediment mitigation concept design plan. And I'm really only going to utilize one slide to kind of summarize this. This is essentially an all-a-cart menu of the options that we had for management. This included the potential creation of a berm or forbays, we call it, for capture of sediment, opening of old creek flow pathways, and then also dredging. Now, while we did find out, and we'll get into the study a little bit, that the forbay capture method will not work due to both the amount of sediment coming in and the very small particle size of the sediments coming in. The rest of it, we are keeping one. The rest of it, we are keeping one, opening up these northern access channels. We're currently dredging in Dorothy Lane and then it will continue over the future in-house to to open up these channels here. And really what that would do is allow the flow of high sediment laden water to spread out through the whole Delta area instead of just tail piping into Lake Lemon. So this would actually increase the rate of capture in the area that's already existing and reduce the amount that's making it to the lake proper. These zones one through five were the dredging zones that we came up with. Um, if you remember back on the maps a while ago, there was kind of like that spit of land forming here, um, which really kind of coincides with that zone one. The plan is, and has not changed from before, is to begin on the southern boundary. And these zone ones to where it gets less than five foot, we'll be treating or dredging all the way to the Lotus Maintenance Line. And we will continue northward until we're limited by either funds or storage capacity for our the sediment disposal sites. Christopher Burke, the sediment transport project, this was done last year. And really the biggest driving factor of this was we had to see how much sediment could possibly be stored in this four bay. We wanted to look at the efficiency of capture and storage. Um, and then just really see the feasibility of the different management practices. What the sediment transport study essentially told us is that given the fine nature of the sediment, it's not feasible to remove a high percentage of incoming sediment when you're restricted to the four bay of the size that was proposed. And actually, in our past studies, I believe maybe in the district plan and some of our earlier studies, they said if you were to have a four bay for capture, it would almost have to be the size of the Eastern Bay east of Reed Point, which is essentially what's happening right now with Mother Nature if we don't do anything. So dredging should focus on areas needed for lake access or in lake areas that becomes too shallow for standard recreation. And this is why we're focusing in that Eastern Bay where the entire freeholder population and the public will benefit from the dredging practices that are going on for our initial project. So we want to bring that Eastern Bay between Reed Point and Point Idolon up to a minimum of five feet depth to the vegetation maintenance line. And finally, the accumulation silt within the body of the lake appears to be unavoidable and should be addressed on an as needed basis. And again, it goes back to the storm frequencies and intensities are increasing. Um, the sediment, there's not really reduction coming in the lake. We can capture more and store it in the Delta by opening the flow path, but the silt is going to continue to come. And that's just the the nature of the beast when you're dealing with reservoirs. This was a couple of graphics from that sediment report. Um, well, right off the top of the hand, they don't mean too much. Um, these lines are the flow rates and sediment delivery rates based on the bathymetric and studies that we have done in the past. And what we see, essentially the the area under the line can be equated to the volume of sediment coming in um, in a given given timeframe. So this red line is nineteen seventy four to two thousand four, we have two thousand four to fourteen and then twenty fourteen to twenty nineteen. This is showing the amount of sediment that came in on an acre feet per year, um, which an acre foot is one acre, one foot deep. It's that that amount of sediment, and I believe it's a little over a thousand cubic yards. Um, but what we see is that this area underneath the lines every year is continuing to increase, which is showing that the volume of sediment as we move forward in time coming in in a given year is continuing to increase as well. Also, what we see on this bottom part, again, it's acre feet, that's how they do it. Um, I have calculated the yardage on the eastern side here. We see our average annual cubic yardage per year coming in as one hundred and twenty five thousand um, over the history essentially of the lakes since nineteen seventy four. Now, the majority of that is likely in the past two decades when we have really noticed a big increase. Between two thousand four to fourteen and then fourteen to nineteen, we are seeing a relatively steady increase of sediment coming into the lake. And again, this is really, I believe, associated with the precipitation patterns and climate changes that we are seeing going on. So there's there's more sediment coming to the lake as we forward. This really drives the factor that we need to look at our methodology for for treating this. So that kind of brings us to where we were, got to the method of what we want to do. We realized opening the channels we can do in-house to spread out the flow of sediment laden water in the Delta. And then we will be doing sediment dredging utilizing hydraulic dredging. Last fall and into the winter, we did purchase a piece of property on South Shore Drive, just south of Little Africa for a hundred and two thousand dollars. The entire lot is about fourteen acres and there's about seven acres of usable disposal site. Um, and that's of these areas that are the open field and not wooded. Um, this western portion does actually have a substantial amount of wetlands from the wetland study that we had. Um, however, that's that's a good thing. If we if we do more projects in the future, we need mitigation. Um, what we can actually do is lock this up into a wetland reserve as mitigation, say, hey, we will never impact those, we'll let it form as a wetland. And they will actually keep that for mitigation. So this is the South Shore Drive parcel, and then that was really kind of our first, um, you know, bird in hand as far as where we can utilize locations for disposal site. Some of the biggest issues that we faced is we can, there's methods to take out immense amount of sedimentation. Um, but the storage is the issue. We do have two other disposal sites that we use for mechanical dredging. We'll continue to utilize those. Um, then we're just, we're in a hilly kind of ravine and there's lots of wetlands and and not much farm fields. So this was a pretty big win as far as having a spot that we could pretty much have guaranteed use of. So to the methodology, what we've realized is that we really just need to focus on the mass movement and removal of sediment and then increasing the functionality of the Delta. So we will be contracting hydraulic dredging for the Eastern Bay on that zone map, zone one through five, beginning in zone one and moving northward. Increase potential flow paths for the water. We'll be doing this in-house with our mechanical dredging to spread the flow through the wetland and then plan for intermittent large scale hydraulic projects. And that really means that this is not a one stop, one shot solution. Um, the sediment's gonna come in, we are looking at utilizing bonding to pay for this first project. But we need, what we need to realize is that we cannot finance our way out of a sediment issue. So moving forwards, we have to figure out how to raise funds internally through charitable giving. Um, just kind of get the funds ourselves to do these projects and do them on intermittent scale. I don't know what that is yet. We'll have to do studies moving forward to look at the sedimentation rates to see how much the Delta is forming. It could be every five years, every eight years, every ten years. A lot of that is gonna depend on how long it takes us to raise the funding. With the bonding process, we will not be able to bond again, potentially for the same type of project due to some laws on serial bonding. We could potentially look at it, but there is a referendum process and it's unlikely that it would be approved again for dredging type projects. So we really need to look at how we can raise money internally to to deal with this issue on an ongoing basis. Implementation. The coronavirus had actually provided a very good time for us to get some work done on this project um, without really having to focus on getting the lake ready for the year. And so we have got a ton done this year, um, as far as permitting, working with like consultants and finance. Um, it's really been been pretty amazing. So for permitting, anytime you do stuff in water, it's pretty permitting intensive. And that's because Department of Natural Resources, Department Environmental Management, Army Corps of Engineers, their main goal is really the protection of water and land. Um, and water being, you know, a pretty crucial resource. So anytime that you're affecting and impacting water, there's gonna be a lot of permitting. The permits that we have had to apply for, and now these are all completed. Excuse me, they have all been submitted and um, they're actually up for public review right now. Um, some people in the eastern portion of the lake, close to where the dredging disposal sites will be, have received letters telling about the project and the permitting. It looks like Pam's holding hers up right there. Um, and I will go ahead and send out that letter to the rest of the freeholders via constant contact. So you can just see um, the language that was that was involved and kind of the information there. So as far as the permitting, the most local level permitting was with the Brown County Soil and Water Conservation District. This is what's called a Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan. And anytime you're looking at doing construction or disturbing greater than a one acre area, you have to have a Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan, which essentially shows the area that you're impacting and what measures you're gonna take. So land that isn't vegetated, the sediment's not sloughing off nutrients, that type of thing. So silt fencing, construction entrances, um, stone barriers, all of that. Um, next is the Department of Environmental Management. A Stormwater Pollution Plan really goes right into the Rule Five Permit. And the Rule Five Permit is the actual permit for land disturbance. So anytime you disturb over an acre of land, you're required to get a Rule Five Permit. We have two Rule Five Permits currently and Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plans. And that is for our two disposal sites on the North Shore on Spiller Road and on Austin Truck. The next Department of Environmental Management Permit is what's called an Individual Section 401. This is for the discharge of dredge material to isolated wetlands. So this was essentially the permit that would allow us to put the dredge material, if we needed to, into the pond and other other areas, um, and not just the dredge material. Um, the discharge material into a pond, if we were to utilize the the pond, uh, which I don't think we'll need to during this round. This four oh one permit would allow us to put in riprap and stone if we wanted to create a barrier to section off that pond to keep some open water, keep some planted. It's the same permit for putting materials into an isolated wetland, whether that be sediment or whether that be the construction of a barrier to maintain open water and create another capture basin there. So I just want to clarify that, that's not just for slugs, that would be for any materials that we needed. Next, we have the Department of Natural Resources, and this is a permit for construction in a floodway. And that is because the lake itself is a floodway and then also the northern portion of the property on South Shore Drive near Little Africa gets into the floodway a little bit. However, since we're not doing big constructions, buildings, um, we have been discussing DNR and this should not be an issue to put the pond there since it's a low hazard. Next, we have Army Corps of Engineers, and this is what's called a Nationwide Permit. And the permit is for aquatic habitat restoration enhancement and establishment activities. And that's really what lets us maintain the reservoir and do the hydraulic dredging. Um, so there's a Lake Restoration Act, which really ties into this Nationwide Permit and allows us to do the dredging in the lake to maintain it for water capacity. So all the permitting has been completed. Um, it's all in the hands of the regulatory agencies and it's currently going through the process now um, for approval and public input and everything that's needed. So construction and dredging, let's get this slide, construction and dredging. There's two disposal sites that we were looking at and I'll get into that right now. And here in a little bit, we'll talk about the funding mechanisms that we have available. For the bonding, the two funding mechanisms were what's called the State Revolving Fund for wastewater projects and open market bonding. And these are both bonding solutions. So with the State Revolving Fund, since it would have been a wastewater project, what they really wanted to see was how we were enhancing the water quality through this project, the straight dredging for recreation, they don't view as a water quality enhancement. So they really wanted to see us utilize the overflow pond as a primary site and then plant it afterwards as a treatment wetland for the uptake of nutrients to create wildlife habitat, just to show a net input from the project as far as water quality and habitat goes. We have since learned that the State Revolving Fund, it will not fund the project at this time. We did not make the cut for this year, so we will be utilizing open market. We don't have to use the overflow pond now for this project. At the time the permitting was put in, that was included because it would have been a requirement under State Revolving Fund. For now, we will start with the land based site. And this first round of projects, I have full confidence that we'll be able to fit the yardage removed into that land based site and that we will not utilize the pond um, during this time. Now, the permitting again was submitted when that was still on the docket. Um, and you know, in the future, if we if we can't get rid of enough sediment and we gotta look at places, you know, there's always the potential that we would would utilize a portion of it. Um, but we'd have the permit in place to where we could separate any type of sediment retention area and open water area. But I do not believe we will, we will need to use it. And ideally, as we move forward in the future, we can get rid of enough sediment from our land based site where we can reuse that over and over like we do our North Shore sites. Especially since we'll need to take some time to raise funds. What we would likely see is, you know, if it takes five years to raise the funds, the goal would be to get rid of all the sediment in that area within those five years as well, so we could just go back and continue to utilize that sediment. Actually, I had a call with uh, the DNR Permit Reporter about two days ago to talk about the continued reuse of that that project, just so they could write into the permits. Um, so that that's where we're at. We we won't be needing the pond site for this. It isn't a permitting because it was there when we applied for it. So for the land based site, these are the the initial construction documents that we have. Um, this was from our Stormwater Management Plan showing where our areas and of impact will be. With this pond right here, we're showing a little over eighty thousand cubic yard storage capacity. Now, this was the preliminary one, which was only based off of a ten foot excavation. We recently had some soil testing and boring done. And the average depth of sediment in that area is actually closer to eighteen feet before we start to get to the bedrock. So we're predicting that we'll be able to fit one hundred and twenty thousand plus cubic yards easily into the site. And there's eighty thousand based on that, and then we're almost doubling capacity since we can go down another eight to ten feet in the area. So essentially what this would show is the water line would come in from the hydraulic dredging. What that is essentially a snow blower auger head underwater. It pumps up the the sluice, which is a sediment water, it pumps it through a line which would come up through the creek. Now, this is enclosed and would dump into the southwest portion of the bay. The way we have it designed now is the water, the sun would settle out as the water moves across. We would have a weir system in the northeastern portion that would allow the water to flow back out into the road right away and through the ditch back to the lake. And so that would be the water that has the sediment removed out of it. There are methods depending on how much sediment is staying in the water. Um, there's different polymers that you can use to help the rate of sediment, what they call flocculation or the sediment falling out of the solution. So that will be monitored because the water that has to go back into the lake will have requirements on how much sediment can remain in it. And our goal is to get the sediment into the pond, not back into the lake. The pond base site, if you were to go to normal pool and utilize the entire site, is seventy three cubic yards. Again, we will not need this for this round of the project. It was included in our Stormwater Management Plan because of State Revolving Fund, it would have been a potential site. Then the benefit of not utilizing it this time was if we were to do a hundred and twenty thousand cubic yards, we would have had to use both sites with only seventy three cubic yard, seventy three thousand cubic yards fitting in the pond. We would have had to utilize the pond, plant it, and for the additional yardage to get us to a hundred and twenty thousand plus, we also would have had to develop the land based site. So this will save money because we will only be developing one site at this time and utilizing that, which is the land based site. So this will save money because we will only be developing one site at this time and utilizing that, which is the land-based site. Hydraulic dredging, this will be fully contracted. And the request for bids, we're working on those, those should be going out in August. And again, we are sticking with our original plan, we'll be starting in the southern zone, zone one. Digging to a minimum depth of five feet, or probably between five and six feet. Two, our eastern vegetation maintenance line, and then moving northward until excuse me, until we are out of capacity or out of money at the storage site. Our in-house operation will be focusing on this eastern portion. And that will be kind of going on as an as needed and as possible basis. This first part has already been cleared out, we're actually in Dorothy Lane right now afterwards. There's a couple other sites that we're looking at for access dredging. But as we have time moving forward, we'll be able to open up these channels in-house utilizing our current permitting and equipment. The disposal site that will be focused on is the site eighteen, the land-based site. I, my plan is in probably September or so to pull off a dredging operation from the water. And start developing that disposal site, assuming our permitting is all available. And I think we can do most of that in-house, again, we went back to the disposal site prep, that's going to be a joint effort. I think we can get the majority of the disposal site prep in-house with our current equipment and staff. We would have to use a contractor for the final design and implementation of the weir system. And maybe some final grading and such for the containment pond. So here's our cost estimate. These are all estimates, the, the purchase of the articulating truck, we know that price because we have the loan, we bought the truck. The creation of the disposal sites and the dredging, those are estimates. The biggest takeaway though is that we are capping the project at one point two million dollars for the bond. So whether the, hopefully the creation of the disposal sites, you know, gets reduced, we can increase yardage. Those are, those are estimates, we will be capping at the one point two million dollars. And we should have more than enough with the current estimate at six cubic yards. We have over a hundred and thirty-four thousand cubic yards removed, that's even more than a hundred and twenty thousand cubic yard goal. So there's a little wiggle room in there and we'll just have to figure that out as we, as we go along. For financing, there's really two options for financing for a government. Aside from, you know, your own generated revenue. And those are short-term notes and long-term bonds. Short-term notes would be like a standard loan from a bank, we've utilized when the past purchased dredging equipment. And we recently utilized one to purchase our new articulated off-road truck. What you are stuck with on a short-term loan, or not stuck with, but rather you're limited to a two-year payment with a balloon at the end with the option to renew it for another two years. So you're really looking at a maximum of a four-year term with a balloon payment at the end. Which I don't believe we were ready or had the financing to do for one point two million dollars to pay it back in four years. So we're looking at the bonding options, which are a maximum of twenty-year term. Now, in our bonding resolution, I believe it was either a five or six-year call period. Where after that timeframe, we could start to pay off the remaining funds if we do raise enough money. So we could cut back that term if we have additional monies that we can use for the debt repayment. On one point two million dollars, that's our assumed principle. The assumed open market interest rate is three point two percent. And all this information is from our financial advisor with Baker Tilly. Our total interest is four hundred and twenty thousand and total debt service, one point six million. And this is assuming an average of eighty-five thousand dollars per year debt service. Now, some of the discussions that I've had with the local banks. I do, I'm hopeful that we can actually get a rate in the twos, the mid to upper twos for this bond process. The state revolving fund was estimated to be at two point five percent. And then our local banking institution has said they believe they can match that on the bond and notes. If they purchase it, so I'm hopeful I will be able to get below that three point two percent for the project. I'm going to go ahead and stop the share now. And before we move on to questions, I really just want to show the timeline that goes along with the financing. Let me pull up the share screen. Can everybody see that?
Yes.
All right, so we're currently on July eighteenth. We're having our meeting to adopt the bond resolution, and this is the public hearing. We actually do not have another resolution for the tentative approval of drawings. We did our preliminary approval at the last meeting. And then in this resolution, it's written in there to finalize the construction drawing. So it's just one resolution that we'll be signing today that'll take care of both of those. After our meeting, we will have to notify the newspapers of our determination to issue bonds. And also have to work with the Bloomington Utilities Service Board. And that's because to take on significant debt, we do have to have their blessing. Our bond resolutions will go to them showing that we'll be utilizing our tax base for repayment, repayment, and they are not liable. So essentially the process after this is getting the CBU to go ahead and write a resolution stating that they're fine if us taking out the bond. And we have been in communication with them, I do not foresee that being an issue. In August, we'll be working on the bids for construction. Now, these are tentative dates, this is August twelfth, and just in August for the bids received. You know, I could go in early September, but in August, we will get out the bids for work with the disposal sites and the dredging. In September fourth, or September, we'll be utilizing the bids that we received. And those budget estimates to have Baker Tilly, our financial advisor, do the final budget. After that, in September, we also have our notice of intent to sell bonds. That needs to be published twice in Indianapolis paper, the Business Journal, and then our local papers. So the first time will be late September, the second time will be early October for publishing our intent to sell bonds. In October is the deadline for bidders to express interest, the actual bond sale. And we're predicted to close at the end of October, so that's when we receive our financing. We can, and we will start working on the disposal site prep. Prior to us having monies from the bond proceeds in-house. So we will be able to, you know, make effort and, and get stuff done regarding the project even before we get the funding. So that's the, the timeframe. I guess for now, I'd first would like to have the board go through any comments and discussion, and then I will open up to the public. And I do have the chat open on YouTube. So once we get to the public comment section, I can go ahead and read those off and address any concerns there.
Hey, Adam, I have a question.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, on your drawing for the volume of the land disposal site. It seemed to have a different amount on there than what you were saying, so I just wanted to get some clarification on that.
And I should have clarified that in there. So those two drawings, the one with a little over fifty thousand yards is actually showing just the volume below the zero elevation marker, the land base. And the thirty something thousand was for the volume above the land base. So I'm not sure why they split it out like that, but it's showing the actual excavation portion. And then the portion above the excavated area that would have berms around it.
Okay, so then based on that, what is our life expectancy for that site?
For that site, I mean, I think we'll fill up the site pretty much with this project. We're, I'm thinking, you know, I think we get the hundred and twenty thousand cubic yards into that site. And then that would be, that would be this project. And then the goal would be to, to get rid of that sediment, you know, over the next few years and then reuse that again.
Okay, thanks.
Other board members with questions or comments, Debbie?
I had a question, if you go back to the slides that show kind of the trending, I think it's your six through nine. You know, the aerial views, I, I guess we've talked yeah, a lot about the east end and that that's our immediate issue. But I just wondered if you could kind of speak to the overall changes in the lake. Because as I look at our west end, you know, where our district is, it clearly is getting more shallow up there. And, you know, it's definitely changing as well.
Yeah, so what we found out from the sediment study that was done by Christopher Burke Engineering. Historical, is everybody still there? I looked frozen for a second. Historical thoughts were that we were receiving about forty thousand cubic yards per year of sediment. What the new sediment transport study showed us that we were receiving over a hundred and thirty thousand yards. And that forty thousand yards alone are settling out in the Delta area. So what this actually showed us, while you notice in the eastern end the most because there's actual land formation going on. Across the entire lake, not including the Delta. They said there, there's an average of about a half inch per year sediment accumulation that is going on as well. Now, while this initial dredging doesn't necessarily stop the sediment accumulation in the western end, the opening of these channels will hopefully reduce that sedimentation rate by allowing us to capture more sediment in the Delta and build that area up. In the existing Delta, not increasing the footprint of it, but in the existing Delta to capture more sediment there. But so Debbie, I mean, I'm not sure if there's anything else that I can, can say to that. But the entire lake is experiencing the sediment issue and their estimates were about a half inch depth per year. Throughout the entire lake, and while you don't really notice that, you know, year to year here in, you know, twenty-four years. If the redates, the rates are not reduced, so there could potentially be an average loss of one foot in depth in the lake as a whole.
Okay, I just kind of wanted to point that out, I thought it was important for people to realize that. And, you know, I would assume that on an ongoing basis, we'll be looking like, I think I told you before, we just got this huge kind of, not a creek, but a water thing that just washes down like right in between our house and Matt Smith's house. And I mean, you just see stuff pouring from the hills down in there. And so just maybe there's some other little quick fixes we can do on some other along the way. But I just wanted to point out that Thank you.
Yeah, agreed, on the long-term maintenance and management, I mean, that's one thing that we do have to look at. I know a couple of the other tributaries, especially in District Seven, they have created weir systems to capture sediment. And they are, are maintaining those, that's something to potentially look at at these other places as well.
Adam?
Yes.
Do we, am I understanding this correctly in that since the sediment is so fine and travels the length of the lake? Do we believe that it settles somewhat equally over the parts of the lake that aren't over all the parts of the lake?
Yes.
Okay, so just because we dig it, dig a hole on the east end, doesn't mean it's going to concentrate there. It's going to go there and then go on its way and
Correct, yeah, the stuff that makes it through the vegetated portion of the Delta generally spreads out pretty evenly throughout the lake. And that's because the sediment is so fine. If Flo Vinsa washes out and the whole lake essentially turns, you know, milk chocolate.
Okay, that's, that's interesting. Any other board members with questions, comments, or concerns before we let our public share?
We all had those letters, I don't know if this is the time for the letters or if you want me to wait for the public.
I think that if, if you are going to share those, this is on top, they are on topic, I think the topic has been addressed. But I will leave that to you as their representative to make that call.
You know, I guess before I read these letters, I would, you know, I'm, I'm at the lake, I don't know. Let's see, I, I think it's too bright for you to see my view of the lake, here's my view of the lake. You know, I guess I would ask you that, you know, if you're at the lake, look at the view of your lake. And, and just for a moment, and think about your view of the lake. And this is what the two property owners on Snug Harbor, on the overflow pond, that's what they're feeling. Is that, look at, look at my view of this lake. And then now consider the fact that someone is considering of filling in this view that you have of your lake to a two-inch depth. And then mitigating that with, you know, trees and shrubs and grasses, et cetera, to produce a wetland. And take away your view of the lake, that, that's what I want you to envision. I can read these two letters, but, but this is, this is, this is their feeling, I want you to feel what they're feeling. And, you know, if you can just, if you can just get that in your head, this is, you know, I, I couldn't even imagine you filling in my, my harbor. That, that would affect some, you know, sixteen residents. And it's just, so this is affecting two freeholders, two of the five hundred and twenty-six freeholders on the lake. That also pay conservancy tax. I don't know if the board wants me to go on, but, you know, I would, I would almost consider we take the overflow pond off the table permanently. I don't know if I have any you know, any board members that would, you know, join me with that effort. Before I read these letters, but, but that is something that I would, that I would like to introduce today. If, if, if that, if I have, you know, some type of you know, go ahead from, from you folks that, that, that you would possibly, you know, join me in that effort.
Let, let me ask a question. To clarify, in Adam's, you could probably be the best to answer it. Is the proposal to completely fill the overflow pond? Or, and maybe I'm incorrect, but I thought it was just a portion of it to the west.
We're not doing it at all right now, right?
That's true, but for the potential down the road, years from now.
How do we know what we don't know?
It, it's a fine question, and you're, you're correct, we are not using it in this initial dredging project. Because of the fact that we ended up not being qualified for the SRF funding. We're going to go with the open market, which does not require the use of it. We don't need it for this, this phase. So I think what's being discussed is, is quite a while down the line. It is still, I know that the residents are concerned that it is still in the permitting, Adam, as you said. That we could potentially needing to use that. So I think they're concerned for the future, as I, and I understand that, but it is not an immediate threat. Mary Jane?
I, I would say a couple of things. One is, I don't think we would be responsible as a conservancy board if we made a decision today about the overflow pond never being used. I, I don't think, I don't think we can say that because we don't know what's going to happen in the next five to ten years. The other thing I would like to say is, I live in a small district and there are several people who live in Lakeview Hills where I live, who have no view, no water view. Because their houses are too far back from the lake and they pay conservancy tax. So that, you know, I, I don't, you know, it's hard to give up something that you've had. I get that, but I don't think we're in a position to make that determination right now. I would also say, we've talked about the overflow pond being you know, full of blue-green algae at different times and potentially. And that's one of the things we're waiting on Sarah Powers to tell us more about, is how things in the pond may be affecting the east end of the lake. So I don't think we're in a position to make a decision, is really all I'm saying.
I totally agree with you, Mary Jane. Thanks.
I, I agree as well, I would like to say, Mike, that I have not met both sets of homeowners. But I have met Rebecca and Brenda, and I would like to give them credit for coming respectfully to meetings. Both of the SPC and of the board. And allowing us, you know, to come onto their property and, and see what they're dealing with. And, and I think they put in a lot of due diligence and I know they're concerned. And, you know, we have, we have tried to be good listeners. I do think that that you should go ahead and read their letters. I, I don't want anyone to feel that they're not heard. I, I, I agree that I think it is premature to ask for a motion to take this off the table forever. We would be doing a disservice to our future boards, I think, because they're going to have a lot to consider after we're, after we're done. I almost said gone, didn't mean that.
Well, the other thing Pam or that I question is, just because this board and I don't support it, you know, might make a judgment, future boards can undo what we did, you know? I don't think there's anything holding any decision.
That's, that's a very good point. I hadn't thought of it that way.
That's exactly right. Okay. You know, I, I spoke with Pam and Mary Jane, oh, maybe a week or so ago and, and, you know, I've got at least four people in my district that say that two, one or two pipes run underneath the causeway. Just at the eastern end of the overflow pond and into the the backyard of Doc Miller. And as I suggested to Pam and Mary Jane, when we hire the divers to inspect the dam and the sluice gate, that maybe we could get those divers to go down and let us know if there is in fact a pipe or two pipes that connect those, those, the pond to the lake. And secondarily, that I, I will step in and assist in getting the culvert lowered in Monroe County so that, you know, it actually does a better service for the, the pond and the lake. Because that seems to be a source of contention between the lot of us. But with that said, let me, let me get these letters read to you. And I, you know, again, I think I spoke my piece to you. So the first letter is from Rebecca Ball and Brenda Pendexter. Pam Dugan, Board President, Adam Casey, Lake Manager, and the LLC D Board. We are writing you to inform you of your desired usage of the Lake Lemon Overflow Lake is not something we can support. Since 2018, one or both of us has sat in on LLC Strategic Planning Committee meetings and attended monthly board meetings in efforts to understand the Lake Lemon Sedimentation Project. And when we saw you were going to use the overflow lake, we even reached out and tried to work with the LLC and offered to compromise with the use of the overflow, overflow lake to no avail. As freeholders of Lake Lemon, the actions by the LLC Board of Directors should not willfully affect us like you intend to do by filling in the overflow lake. Making the overflow lake a wetland that will eventually become a stagnant body of water since there will be no water movement between the two lakes. Sedimentation will give way for vegetation to grow, to grow, decreasing the value of our property. And we will have a loss of our reflective view and the loss of our recreational use of the pond. We and our pets will be subject to more undesirable animals and increased risk of West Nile virus and Lyme disease. The overflow lake becoming a wetland will have a negative impact to current wildlife, including two eagles, lake otter, turtles, blue heron, and the fish in the pond. The hydraulic dredging project has a positive effect for all other homeowners except for the residents of Snug Harbor Lane, and this is unfair to us as freeholders. There are other options to the sediment project we would like for you to look at. According to the Shrewsbury Lake Lemon Sediment Mitigation Map that you are currently using, there are nineteen other sites that can be used that will not infringe upon any freeholders. And that is just at the east end of the lake. By using the project element numbers on the Shrewsbury map labeled fifth, number fifteen at four and a half acres, number nineteen at seven point three acres, number twenty-one at thirteen point six acres, you would have twenty-five plus acres. That is enough area to deposit the sedimentation and build the wetland. The permit request submitted by the Chris Burke Engineering on behalf of the LLC states in the project description and project location that the use of the overflow lake is not optional, but simply states it will be used. At this time, we request that the LLC Board move the table to utilization of the sediment management project and the overflow lake indefinitely. Respectfully, Rebecca G. Ball and Brenda L. Pendexter, sixty-five, twenty-one, Snug Harbor Lane.
Thank you.
Well, I got one more.
I know, I'm just thanking you individually.
Okay. Pam Dugan, LLC Board President, Adam Casey, Lake Manager, Lake Lemon Conservancy District Board of Directors. My husband and I, Stephen and Teresa Sims, would like to formally object to the proposal of filling in the South Shore Lake area on the south side of the causeway, which you have termed the overflow pond. We moved here this year and are living at sixty-five, seventeen Snug Harbor Lane all year round. This beautiful body of water is our lakefront, where we enjoy the spectacular view, reflective sunsets, boating, fishing, swimming, and watching the wildlife that live there on the quiet waters. In fact, the view and water access is what sold us on the property, even though it took a great deal of additional monetary investment to make the home livable. We could not have envisioned, nor were we informed that there was a plan to destroy it. This would decrease our property value immensely. Since moving here, we have noticed there are a lot of people who also enjoy this side of the lake. People put their boats in there, swim, fish off the bank, ride bicycles, and take daily walks along the causeway. Filling this area in will turn it into a swampy area attracting mosquitoes and snakes. The large old turtles, fish, eagles, blue heron, lake otters, and other wildlife who currently call these quiet waters their home would be forced to move. This also would be a detriment to our health, the health of our grandchildren who visit often, all of the other residents who enjoy walking and cycling on this part of the lake. They would have to endure the danger of mosquito bites and perhaps snake bites. Also, the beautiful view would be permanently gone and turned into an ugly sight. We understand that there's a great need to dredge the lake to improve the water recreation of many lake freeholders. However, it is not fair or just to destroy our waterfront in order to improve theirs. Is it not written somewhere that all residents should be treated equally? Actions of the LLC Board of Directors should not willfully affect any freeholder like this. The overflow lake is an important part of the lake and has served its purpose and maintained its beauty for sixty-plus years. There must be other options for the disposal of the sediment, ideally where residents of the surrounding counties could come and pick up the soil to use as filter. That way you could use the same areas over and over again. We request that the LLC Board move the table indefinitely using the overflow lake as a disposal site for the sediment. Thank you for your consideration. Sincerely, Stephen Teresa Sims.
Thank you, Mike.
So I, I think, yeah, I think you understand where I stand. I've got, you know, many things going on in my district as, as, as you all know, so I'm just going to take them one at a time. So there you have the overflow pond discussion from their, their director, and I think you know how I feel.
Okay, we appreciate that. Um, I think, I, what, yes, Debbie?
I just have one other comment. I, I don't want to leave it that Mike said that he's personally going to take on this culvert issue. And there's been discussion back and forth, and I think that rests with, you know, I think Adam should take the lead on that. We should figure out. I, I don't understand the whole issue, but I just don't want to leave it at that. I don't think one board member should do that. I think we need all the facts.
I agree with that.
Mike, can you work with Adam as far as the suggestions you shared with Mary Jane and me, the diver? I don't know if that's practical or not, but I, I think we have to look into, how do we resolve this once and for all?
Yeah, we hear out the water thing from Sarah, you know, because there's problems there.
Here, definitely, definitely a, a management and board decision together.
I can.
Can you live with that? Okay. I appreciate that, Debbie. I think that at this point, if everything's working, we need to allow further public comment on the public hearing piece of our meeting. And our legal requirement is to entertain your thoughts, questions. We, we are not required to answer everyone. We will, as we are able and, and have knowledge to do so, but you have the right certainly to be heard as regards all you've just heard from Adam. And by the way, Adam, I thought your presentation was stellar. And it's very good even for us who live this all the time to go over it again. So you did a wonderful job and I know you worked hard on that. So Alex or Adam, are you getting the feed for these questions?
Yeah, I have it up and for the general, I'll have Alex read it for the normal board meetings. I'll go ahead and, and read.
Okay, I think that's what we agreed to. Alex, you'll get your turn at the end.
If you haven't got any responses or questions in there yet, please put them into the chat. I'll go ahead and read everything below where I, where I stated that. First off, we have Frank Van Overmieren. He said the land-based disposal site can be enlarged fifteen percent if more flatland is purchased. Ten thousand dollars is offered from property owner to the east. Disposal site could be larger to west. I will comment on that real quick. I have actually been in discussions with that property owner directly to the east. I have actually gotten him the information from the Brown County Planning Department to create a minor subdivision. Currently, he can't separate just that one acre of property and sell it to us. If he goes through the process to transition it into what's called a minor subdivision, he could transfer off that property. However, along with that, you wouldn't be allowed to have construction in there. So if that were to happen, we would have to get a variance from the zoning department to utilize that property. While we won't be purchasing that property immediately, I did include in our permitting, our stormwater management plan and Rule Five permit actually shows that entire parcel, including that potential one acre. So if we are able to purchase that property and the process runs through that, we can utilize it, it will already be included in our permitting. So that's, that's good on that. I mean, I was asked that we read two prior questions. One says it was limited because over two hundred spaces. The other one says, if we are receiving massive changes in ten periods for land formations, the hydraulic dredging of the highest Delta areas should be done before above-surface area land and trees are formed. And I kind of agree with that. I, I believe that, you know, the highest points are that southern point right near the creek. Kind of our own equipment, though, you can't go in and select just the areas right at the waterline because these big barges traps, you have to be able to dredge into those areas. But I, I agree and they're, they're one of the highest priorities. Head back down. Next, Ronaldine Adamson, anybody know what happened to the lower unit on the outboards of the small barge? Really doesn't have to do anything with this, but we, we toasted a prop on there and the lower unit fell off in the creek. We were able to recover the, recover the unit with a fishing magnet. And we got that to art and that should be back on by Monday. So the lower unit fell off of one of the motors. Susan Snyder Solomon, thank you, Deborah, for bringing up the point that sediment impacts all of us at our waterline and beyond, even at the far west end where our property is located. Please provide a summary of the importance of slowing the incoming sediment for all of us in terms of the health of the lake in general. Just to speak on that, one of the goals is to increase the amount of sediment captured in the Delta. Any reduction in sediment entering the lake as a whole will slow down that the rate of accretion or the sediment forming on the bottom and decreasing depth. So that will always remain one of the highest priorities, even beyond dredging, to work on shoreline reinforcements, riprap, maybe potentially picking out areas in the creek that we can reinforce to decrease sediment coming in. So that will be an ongoing process. And again, it's, it's a, that's a circular process. You increase sediment, you decrease depth, you increase vegetation. So it's just kind of a feedback loop and that is going to be an ongoing thing that we will have to try to actively manage. Christie Merriman, they're concerned about the pond, but what about the health and flooding of others east of the dump site? I'm assuming that's the land-based site. As far as flooding, there really shouldn't be an impact on flooding. We are taking out sediment from the lake and we are moving it on to the land. So the volume for potential storage in a flood event is not really being decreased or changed. We're just simply changing where that sediment is at. So while we will be taking that block of sediment from the lake bottom, we place it on land. You now have more area inside the lake there. So there, there really shouldn't be any impact on potential flooding. As far as health, I actually talked to the DNR. They got a call about this. I'm assuming that refers to that. And it was regarding the health of the soil. Last year, we actually had some soil testing done by the City of Bloomington Utilities because they were looking at utilizing soil for their switchyard park project. The soil did come back clean enough for residential and playground, so high contact, kids eating the soil. So there's not any major contaminants in the soil as far as contamination and health concerns. Yes. Rebecca Ball is my only choice to remove the over lake from, the overflow pond from the permit as requested in formal public meeting with the Vision of Water with DNR. Please include in public comment. That, that's correct, Rebecca. The overflow pond was included in our permit. There is a process by which, since you received that letter, you can contact DNR and meet with them regarding, regarding that. So your process to either change the permit or get that fully removed would be to create a meeting with the DNR. You're absolutely correct on that. Jesse Trueblood, let me scroll down here. Frank Van Overmieren brought much to this cause of this time, effort, money, and expertise about deteriorating conditions, particularly on the east end. Was removed from the task group. We, we do thank you, Frank, for the, the time and effort that you put in, into the task group. It's been, been a great help and, you know, we're hitting the road now. So I think we're all good things and moving forward. Susan Snyder Solomon, for those of us without the full financial planning history, would you explain how the bonding works and how, as freeholders, it impacts us financially? We'll get into the bond a little bit more in the meeting. Essentially, the bond allows us to take out a long-term financing plan. The funds for repayment of the bond debt service are guaranteed through our special benefits tax. So in our special benefits tax that we request, there's eighty-five thousand dollars that will be in there for the repayment of the bonding process. So it will be paid back through the taxes, spread out over the years. I'm not sure if anybody else wants to comment on that, Deborah, Mike, but essentially we're putting up our, our special benefits tax as guaranteed revenue to pay for the bond.
Right. And I, I guess the only thing I would say to you, Susan, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to follow up with you, but you know, we already have it in the budget and we're going to get to the twenty twenty-one budget. And so, you know, what we do is ask for a set amount of money every year. So we're not quote, raising the rate or, you know, raising taxes, you know, by, what was it, like twenty thousand dollars overall or something like that? Because originally we, we had counted on like sixty-eight thousand as a principal and interest payment, and now it's going to be like eighty-five thousand. But the thing that I got educated on and I'm understanding is, you know, if you really looked at your own tax bills, I, you probably see that the rate is kind of decreasing, you know, if your Cess value goes up, you know, what you're really paying is the rate is going down and as more people freeholders come on and build on the lake, there's a higher tax base and all we do is ask for one solid amount. So I don't know if that answers your question or not, or you guys want to add anything.
But it will be detailed out a little more in the budget, twenty twenty-one public reading here coming after this agenda item, if that makes sense.
We'll move back on. Christie Merriman summarized these two since we've already had one. They get lots of water from the fields when it rains. They're concerned about wells and more flooding after disposal utilizing the land-based site. That not all freeholders benefit from this. They're far east and will never get to use what they have as a recreational area. We've kind of already responded to that. I mean, the disposal site will actually create a flow path for this water. Currently, those fields are below the flood line on the northern part. Having a dedicated flow bath for the flow path for the water should hopefully create an easier flowway for water to get off that field and back into the lake. And that we will, I believe everybody will benefit from the project and that's why we're focusing on the eastern bay and the lake proper. So it's a lake, it's an area that's utilized for recreation by the public and for the freeholders. Kevin Fagan said, given the current timetable, when do you estimate that sediment will begin to be removed from the lake? How long will it take to spend the one point two million? How much of the east end will be done at that time? The current timetable, we would have our, our monies in late October, November. The current timetable, we would have our, our monies in late October, November. Um, focus on the disposal site prep over the winter time. And then the goal would be early springtime, um, once we can to, to hit the dredging. So I'm not going to give them the exact date because then it will change. Um, but you know, hopefully after, after we got to winter and into the season where it's possible to dredge, so I would say next springtime. For when we actually start removing sediment. How long will it take to spend the one point two million? Not too long, I don't think. We've already, we've already purchased the truck. Um, the hydraulic dredging from what we've talked about from some of the other consultants, they believe it could be upwards of a three-month process. Three to four to, to get all that work done. So we should be able to get the money on the ground completely. Next spring and into the summertime. And how much of the eastern will be done at that time? Again, it's hard to say exactly. I believe we can get the majority of those zones, one through four done. Um, based on the bathymetric surveys that we have. Um, but again, the, the final, final, you know, northern extent that we get to will have to be decided or, or shown. Once we, once we actually start dredging, so we know how much we get out and we'll have a stopping point. But I think we can get a substantial amount. Of those, the main lake areas on that side.
Hey, Adam.
Yes.
Debbie, well, Kevin kind of brings up a good point that we need to front load that as much as we can because we don't want to be. Dredging during the season when people are wanting to boat, uh, because that kind of entered my mind when you were talking about it.
And that, I mean, that may be. There probably will, I mean, probably will likely be some overlap of, of boating. Um, luckily, they'll be confined to that eastern bay right there. And, uh, they deal with this on other lakes as well. So they'll actually be able to. Put the piping in a way where you can still access the channel. They can see the piping, they can market for channel crossings. Um, so you still will be able to utilize Bean Blossom Creek and they will be kind of localized. So while there may be some overlap. Um, there really shouldn't be too large of an impact on recreation. Um, especially where we're dredging at, you really shouldn't be skiing and boating high speed in those areas right now.
Okay, thank you.
Kathy Lewis, how do you determine where to dredge? We live on Point Idolon and it's getting very shallow at the docks. We now have to raise our engine quite a lot to get docks. This has been determined, I, I get on that map and I can probably pull it up. Here real quick is we are going to start. In the southern region and zone one, the reason why we are starting in these channels is to provide. A depth increase that will, is able to be. You know, used as recreation and boating for the public and freeholders at large. I believe this has the highest impact as far as affecting everybody. So we're going to start in the zone one and move northwards, um, as, as far as we can with, uh, with capacity and funding. Kathy McClure, how set in stone is our sediment removal plan area? I, I think it's pretty set. I think we voted before on it to approve the, the management plan in our preliminary engineering report. Um, so where we're starting that and the direction that we're moving are, are pretty well set. Well, we have flexibility in adjusting those areas if hydraulic dredging company makes additional recommendations when they are actually on the site. I, I suppose so, um, but when we've talked them before, we've showed them, you know, where the areas are going to be dredged. And they are the contractor. So they'll essentially start where we say. We're going to start and then move forward in that northern portion. Um, and we've actually, we will work with them some. With our own equipment in case they do run into tree stumps, logs, areas that we can't currently get to with our barge. Once we have paths dredged to there, we can actually get up there and remove stuff. So we'll be working in combination with them. Our dock is, this is Christie Merriman. Our dock is next to Little Africa and pay our fees every year. We've not been able to use it in a couple of years due to. Lack of dredging, not even for fishing now. Um, kind of getting out of the, this process, what I would say is that. It is a sublease area. We actually have sublease spots available in that far. Western Chitwood Channel. So if you'd like to move your sublease dock to an area with deeper water, we can absolutely talk about that. I think with that, I'm going to go ahead and there's nothing else on here for now. Um, I think that's pretty good. As far as the public comment portion goes, is there anything else from the board for discussion or?
Alex, you had your hand up.
Do you want me to read, uh, Steve's email now or later?
Um, sure. I guess it would be on topic, wouldn't it? Thank you. Yeah, this is a gentleman in my district. Thank you, Alex.
So Pam and I received an email from Steve Langman. Um, he said, to the Lakeland Board members, my wife and I would like to show support for the hydraulic dredging. And the bonding that will pay for this. We are also hoping they will remove sediment along Point Idolon. This area is in dire need of dredging. This will benefit many freeholders. Please have this written in the board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. Uh, any further comments from the board? Our next task at hand is to officially adopt this bond resolution by a majority vote. Okay, everybody's. Got their questions answered. Um, we, there was a resolution in your packet for this. Did you all have a chance to see it? The bond resolution? Is that, is that, are we?
Miss it. How many pages?
Yeah. Oh, my gosh, I know. I was, I was going crazy. Twenty-two pages long. It's, it's a very detailed thing. The lawyers, you know, how that goes. I, I think that at this point then we need a motion. If there's no further discussion amongst the board members, we need a motion to adopt. This bond resolution. Michael?
I, I will vote for the project, uh, but I just want the board to understand. The difficulties in my district that I have. You know, relating to. The overflow pond and then. Uh, then there'll be another discussion that I'll have later on, later on about another. Potential problem that we have at the east end, but I am for the project. I want the, I want the board to understand that I am for the project. But you also have to understand the difficulty that we have in this district. So.
Thank, thank you. Um, uh-oh, where did Alex go?
We just lost his, um, video for a minute. He'll be back.
Okay, it's, we're still live on YouTube, though. That's my. Okay. All right. Um, back to my request for a motion on the resolution.
I will make, I will make a motion to adopt the resolution and get this project on the road.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Les. Is there any further discussion or are we ready to vote? There being none, uh, I've lost, oh, there's Mike. Okay. Uh, all those in favor of adopting the bond resolution for the sediment management project, I'm going to roll a call. Mike Blackwell?
Hi.
Thank you, Mary Jane.
Hi.
Debbie?
Hi.
Les?
Hi.
Hi, Pam.
Hi.
The, uh, motion is voted unanimously. Thank you. All right, that brings us to, uh, agenda item five, which is the, uh, first public reading of the twenty. Twenty-one proposed budget.
Just real quick to. Pretty awesome that we passed the bonding resolution. I just want to say this is a. Major step in the management of the lake. I mean, this is a, we can do in one year, what takes us ten to twelve years with our current operation. And, uh, amount of efficiency, even though there's some costs there and, you know, not everybody's going to be a hundred percent happy, but this is a milestone in the management of the lake. So I just like to thank everybody's effort. Round running is absolutely amazing.
Well said. And thanks to everyone who has put in so much time on this. Uh.
Yeah.
It's, it's unbelievable.
We're finally doing something.
I hope people see that. All right. Back to the budget. I guess it's the second public reading. We had the first one in June. It says first on here.
Uh, it is the second read.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, uh, you were absent in the last, uh. Budget meeting that we had, myself, Deborah Ladyman and, and, and Adam. Uh, Adam made a phone call to Baker Tilly and had got the. I guess the wherewithal on what to do with the cumulative improvement fund. Now we have two funds. Uh, not only are we going to get a hydraulic dredger on the lake, but now we. We are, we have grown to, uh, become a municipal government with two funds. Um, a general fund where we operate, do all of our operating, uh, costs, revenues and expenses. And then we have a, a, a completely separate improvement fund. And I hope that continues down the road. I want to answer Susan Solomon's question, just, uh, actually, we raised taxes in twenty nineteen. The sixty-seven thousand dollars to pay for this project. And we used that fund. Deborah Ladyman made a motion. That we only use that money, starting in twenty nineteen for sediment management. And that is all we've used that money for. You guys are witnesses. And so we really now have only increased that tax to repay this bond. By eighteen thousand dollars to come up to eighty-five thousand dollars. And we've also, Adam also got clarification on how to put that money in debt service repayment. And, uh, we took it out of the, uh, what we call, what we normally call our revenue for Brown County Monroe County taxes. Uh, step in here anytime, Adam, uh, as you've been working on this with me.
Yeah, and I'll go ahead and, um, I just pulled up the, I hope you can see it now, the actual.
Oh, yeah.
Budget process in the back there. Uh, it's on our website and during making the presentation, all that, I forgot to.
Makes it a lot easier.
Uh, yeah, so again, the, the cumulative improvement fund, um, this is a, a new fund. That is tax-based, that we can only use for improvements, um, park capital, lake capital. Um, so I think it's, it's going to be pretty awesome. It's going to be some guaranteed funds that we can use. Um, for stepping up, you know, our park infrastructure, that type of stuff. And then I'll go ahead and move on to, here's the. Descriptions for the revenues that Mike was talking about. Here's the Brown County Monroe County tax. Um, as of this year, we do have, I think it was sixty-seven thousand and then there are sixty-five thousand. It'll be bumped up to eighty-five thousand. So about a twenty thousand dollar increase for the bond repayment based on what we know from our financial advisors. And you can go ahead, Mike.
Okay, uh, thank you. Now that is different than the copy you sent me. So this, uh, this makes it a lot easier to look at that copy. So. We're starting, I've got to change my paperwork. Sorry about this, folks. Um, okay, so. Uh, eighty-seven, six-twenty. Um, I got eighty-seven, four-twenty, but I'm going to use your copy. So, um, we, we have raised, uh, uh, we, and I'm going to go back. We haven't raised taxes since two thousand eight. And we bought the, the barge from Dick Payne and the excavator. Uh, that was two thousand eight. That was the last time we raised taxes. Since then, we went eleven years, twenty nineteen, that's when we raised the tax to sixty-seven thousand dollars. It was almost. It was almost a flat increase because of our assessed value. And, uh, I'm available by email. If people want to email me, uh, I can explain it in a little further detail. But because of the growth of the lake proper and the assessed value increasing. That sixty-seven thousand dollar tax increase was, uh, maybe a two cent, Adam, two cent increase overall.
Yeah, it was, it was, uh, very minimal. I think of when we first proposed it in twenty nineteen, I think we were expecting like in upwards of a twenty percent. Increase in the tax rate because the assessed values have increased so much in the two counties. Um, I think it was just under a ten percent change that we're at now. Um, since the money that we ask for is set. The more the assessed values go up, the, the lower the rate goes.
So with the eighteen thousand dollar increase over the sixty-seven thousand, you can see the Brown County, uh, taxes. Um, increased, uh, now that says fifty-two hundred dollars. I don't know if that's accurate or not. Cause I thought it was only going to be five thousand there. But anyway, according to the twenty twenty-one budget as written. Brown County tax will go up fifty-two hundred dollars and then the Monroe County tax will go up fifteen, should be fifteen thousand. Okay, you'd reduce that to two hundred. That'll be fourteen thousand, eight hundred, uh, for the, for the Monroe County tax. Everything else in revenues, uh, should be the same with the exception of the. Forty-one forty sediment removal bond loan proceeds will be reduced by the two hundred thousand dollars. And then we have increased dredging and riprap income by ten thousand dollars. Okay, I think the next page. And I'm going to follow along. Okay, wages. Wages, uh, we went with the, um. Uh, what we just call the, uh, the, the increase and, uh.
Living index.
Cost of living index. Thank you very much. Uh, we went with three percent, uh, pretty much across the board. Uh, the manager's salary will be sixty-five thousand, park operations supervisor thirty-seven, two hundred. Uh, equipment operations supervisor, full-time excavator, forty-one thousand, two hundred. And then, of course, as you go on down the line, we'll pay more in social security and, uh. Unemployment compensation, uh, uh, pension, health insurance, uh, et cetera. So total for, uh, salaries and benefits for next year, one ninety-one, seven hundred compared to this year, one eighty-two, seven fifty. So since we have hired a full-time excavator, that has reduced some of our hourly wages, as you can see. Now, uh, we, we give the increases to the people that work the gate and the park attendants. Um, what is that increase, uh, Adam? What?
We raised the gate park attendance by just a thousand dollars over the year, um, just to get more hours in there. And then the lake patrol stayed the same. For the pushboat operator, which is the other hourly. Um, we've actually raised the total amount of hours and we shifted it around a little bit. And part of that is because we are expecting to do more private dredging for revenue generation next year. Um, and actually this year, we're already, I think, pushing thirty thousand dollars just in, uh, the private. So I don't think it'll be an issue getting forty thousand all next year. But in line item six, one, one, six, we've raised. Um, by three thousand dollars for the private dredging to increase hours, the amount of private dredging that we're going to be doing. We've decreased the LLC dredging from twelve thousand dollars to ninety-five hundred dollars. And that's because we'll be transitioning to more gener- revenue generating private dredging. Um, the pushboat operator other, that's for everything else, disposal sites, all that type of stuff. Um, and that was decreased by three hundred, just because we really wanted to. Come out with an almost even change across the board. I believe we raised it by, oh. Not many hours, but we're transitioning towards the private dredging rather than LLC dredging.
Brings grand total wages to two thirty-six, nine hundred. Uh, this year it was two twenty-six, seven fifty. And, uh, thank you, Adam. That, that is because of our increased private work being performed. Uh, so next slide. General, so supplies, sorry, okay. So our merchant fees, we increased six hundred dollars from twelve hundred to eighteen hundred dollars. Um, printer, copier, computer, we increased two hundred dollars from eight hundred to one thousand. Um, the total there, eighty-six hundred dollars compared to this year was seventy-eight hundred dollars. Uh, moving on down, we increased our, our gas and our diesel fuel for next year because of increased workload that we anticipate. Uh, this year, seven thousand, next year, nine thousand for regular gas. This year, nine thousand for diesel fuel, next year, twelve thousand, bringing the total to twenty-one thousand dollars. Next year compared to sixteen thousand this year. Um, the only increase in repair and maintenance supplies will be the riprap erosion control. Again, because of the increase in private work, we increased that. Three thousand dollars to eighteen thousand. Total for that is thirty-seven thousand, five hundred for next year compared to thirty-four thousand, five hundred this year. And then, uh, we are going to purchase some new uniforms, four hundred dollar increase for that category. And signs and nautical markers, of course, every year we buy those, uh, an increase in two thousand dollars, so six thousand dollars for next year. Compared to thirty-six hundred this year. Grand total supply seventy-three thousand, one hundred for next year compared to sixty-one thousand, nine hundred this year. And we are still services and charges and. We anticipate, um, a little bit more for, uh, for accounting services. Uh, fifty-four hundred this year to be six thousand next year. That's really hard to see.
I'm trying to figure out if I can.
No, I got my copy, thank you. Grass mowing, actually, we're going to take a decrease in grass mowing, 15,000 this year to 10,860 next year. We have a new 6340 category, professional development. We threw $1,500 in there for onsite training or whatever. Total for that category, actually, the decrease, 72,360 for next year compared to 74,400 this year. The, oh, I lost, I still got my.
Pull it back up here.
Communication, transportation, professional services stayed flat at 1,000. An increase in phone and email and internet, 3,500 compared to 3,000 this year. We reduced the hotel cost from 300 this year to zero next year. Increased meals from 150 this year to 200 next year. Subscriptions and membership is an increase of $600, probably mostly due to constant contact.
And Zoom.
Pardon me?
Zoom, and it's 15.
And Zoom. 1,400 next year compared to 800 this year, $6,100 for next year. Total category, 5250 for this year. A decrease in the newsletter, 600 this year to zero next year. Other printing will be reduced from 1,500 this year to 1,200 next year. Total for that category, 3,200 next year compared to 4,100 this year. An increase in insurance, as always, $45,000 this year, up to $50,000 next year. Trash will be increased, $300 next year to $1,800 compared to $1,500 this year. And portalets increased to $3,000 next year compared to $2,000 this year. Total for that category, 11,350 compared to $10,050 for this year. Okay, see if I'm on the same, yep. All right, buildings and grounds, we've increased that $5,000 for 15,000 next year compared to 10,000 this year. Sluice Gate inspection, as I just spoke about earlier, $4,500, and that may even be increased if we do get. I'll work with Adam on that to try to get the divers to try to check those pipes. $4,500 for next year, $40,000, $40,000 next year for that category compared to 30,500 this year. Water testing, $8,000 next year, a $1,500 increase compared to 6,500 this year. Contingency fund, an increase to $5,000 for 10,000 next year compared to 5,000 this year. Dam and spillway inspection, $5,000 for next year, there was no inspection this year. Dam and spillway repairs, obviously, we had $5,000 in budget for this year, there was zero next year. Disposal site prep, with the ongoing increase in private dredging, $20,000 for next year compared to 15,000 this year. Debt service bond repayment, this is where we've increased, it was $67,000 this year as we spoke. We increased that 18,000, that's $85,000 this year, that, right, is that in there?
Yeah, well, and to that, to that point, we had debt service under other services and charges. If I scroll down a little bit, we actually created an actual debt service category, 6790. For bond repayment, sediment management, so specifically for the bond, $85,000.
Thank you, that's, that was the change, that's a change I don't have, thank you, got it. So left off there at 6662. Moving on down, other services and charges, debris removal increased to 10, 2,000 next year, $500 increase, 2,000 next year compared to 1,500 this year. Total for that category, I might have to look at, because we reduced that, total has been reduced. To 114,800 compared to 169,800 this year. Grand total services and charges, 297,810 compared to 339,100 this year. Okay. In the last page, the sediment mitigation project, so for this year. We have $200,000 in the 2020 budget for this year, for the, for the truck, the new truck. There'll be zero for next year. The sediment mitigation project, again, is on the books for this year, it'll be on the books for next year. What Adam and I will do is we'll do a budget reduction after we have our workshop. We'll do a budget reduction, take that 950 out of 6750, that'll be, that'll be gone. And then that'll be, the 950 then will roll over to next year, that is our sediment mitigation costs. Total for that category will be $950,000 for next year. And right now, it's 1,150,000, which will be reduced 950 after our July workshop. Let's see, park improvement, we had $30,000 budgeted for this year. Zero for next year, and grand total capital expenditures, $950,000 for next year.
To comment on that, Mike, the, the park, we do still plan on doing park improvements, but those fundings would come out of the new. Budget category, the new fund, the cumulative improvement, cumulative improvement fund, rather than the general budget. So we do have $45,000 budgeted for improvements, but it'd be the cumulative improvement fund.
And basically, that 30,000 either rolls over or we use that to balance our books at the end of the year.
Correct, and part of it is for the, to pay for the parks work that we're doing right now.
Yes, thank you. Again, the new category, 6790, here's our bond repayment sediment management money. That we've increased at $85,000. Grand total debt expenditures is $85,000 for next year. This year, 1,180,000, again, that will be reduced once we go to our workshop. Total expenditures budget, 1,642,810 for next year. This year, 1,807,750, as I said, that'll be reduced after our workshop. Our net XX expenditures over revenue is a negative 30,000, 060 compared to a negative $26,000 this year. And if there's no discussion, that concludes the second read of the 2021 budget.
And just, just to touch on, thank you, Mike, just to touch on the reductions. As Mike said, after we have our meeting with department, local government finance. We'll either do, we'll do budget reductions based on how much bonding we receive this year. So we have the $1 million in the 2021 budget as a placeholder. And really, that'll be dependent upon how the bonds work, if we receive all the money at once, or if we do a draw type bond. Where we'd receive it as we need it. So the, the amount of reduction will depend on how much we actually draw from the bond this year versus next year.
Are there any other questions from the board about this? We don't, there's no action required today. We will, as you know, have a note, a final reading of it and last ability to make changes at the August meeting. Is everybody still awake? Sort of.
I don't have any questions.
All right, all right, well, thank you, Mike and Adam. We will.
Can you ask?
More time.
Can you ask Adam to stop sharing the screen so we can see each other all again?
Oh, sure, there we go, how's that better? Thank you, Adam. Very well, thanks again, guys. All right, that brings us, it's, it's the Adam Show today, it's the manager's.
Been a good day for the Adam Show, can't be happier with what we're getting done. Manager's report, this will be pretty brief. Our barge operation, so far for the year, we've removed 3,661 yards. And Dorothy Lane, just over 1,900 cubic yards alone. And then in private, we've done over 1,100, or right at 1,100 cubic yards for private dredging this year. That was in July, so I think that'll push us almost to 30,000 in private income for this year. For vegetation control, and I am actually going to share the screen one more time for this, Mary Jane. We will be having a treatment Monday in the eastern portion of the lake. This is for the lotus and spatter dock, which is what we call emergent plants above the water. And then for some submerged vegetation, primarily in the Chitwood Channels. And east of Idolon, where there's some late season growth. So those will all be tackled on Monday. I did receive a petition from District Seven regarding the location of the eastern management line. And I'll pull this up just to show, the petition essentially asked for us to keep the line where it was. Last year before any changes were made in District Seven. And just to kind of clarify what changes were actually made at the January vote. This is the 2020 proposed maintenance line. The line prior to that, actually, the only difference was this yellow portion, just east of Point Idolon. So the line that was approved for lotus maintenance for this year through DNR. The change was only in District Six, where there's more of a direct line from this eastern portion down to the old line. And the southern portion, there was no changes that was made to the line as a result of that vote. So that has remained there where it was. So as far as the petition, there's not action to be taken at the moment. I have talked with Mike about the potential of talking about a line that's further east. If we are to dredge there, or if they've raised their own funds for dredging. Now to say off the bat, you know, if we, we move it further east, we need to have a plan in place to dredge it. But if District Seven were to get their own funds, as Mike had mentioned, for additional dredging. I would fully support, you know, moving that line to the east as long as there's going to be dredging there. And Mike, would you like to weigh in on that?
Well, that, that is true, we spoke yesterday and. You know, with the, with the change that you made at the north end, that benefited, you know, many freeholders at the north end. I think you guys remember the January meeting, when that was called for a vote. I was, I was against the fact that we, you know, didn't have any more freeholder input at the south end. And so, you know, I, I would like to. And I know that we don't have to do that today, but I would like you to take into consideration that we do the same thing that you did at the north end. And, and move that line further east as, as we did for, for the freeholders there. Particularly the one freeholder that sent the letters in. And we come back on the C-shaped line and move that at the south end. Further east, and I spoke with Adam, we had a very good conversation, he said he was with, he was in with it. We just go just west of the culvert that we're going to use to run the pipe through to our disposal site. And that would, that would be the new, I call it a demarcation line, but Adam sent me a text. It is called the East End Maintenance Line, and I would like for you to really consider that when we vote on this in 2021. And send it to the DNR, that we, we, we make the same change that we did to the north end, to the south end. Move that line just a little bit further east. Adam can draw it, I can't draw it on here, he has control. But it would be just where that culvert, and it's further, yeah, it's right in there.
It's right here.
Yeah, right there, it's not that significant, folks, it's just, you know, again, as I said. When we look out here, you know, we would just like to see, we would just like to see a little bit more lake. We've got to draw a line in the sand where we're going to stop, you know, the, the growth coming, coming to the west. And again, I had a good conversation with Adam, he said he would support it. You know, I've got to go back to my people, and we, you know, we can talk about. Our group has already talked about starting a fund to, you know. We know we're going to have to dredge every five or six or seven years, so we're going to start a fund. And, and, you know, hopefully, we can get that fund established and, and, and attack that, that maintenance line, so, thank you, Adam. And I, and I appreciate your support on that, so.
And I'll work with you on that, Mike, about, you know, looking where we'd want to move it, what the process would be for dredging and that type of stuff.
Very much, thank you.
If, if I can be of help, this feels very much like something we just dealt with up in our area, so I'm, I'm kind of disappointed that we didn't. Tackle it all at once, but I'll break it into pieces, and like I said, if I can help you, I will.
Madam Chair, that, that's awesome, because, yeah, when it comes, we'll vote, you know, let's, let's make sure we're doing this. When, you know, in January or whenever that's going to be, thank you.
Yeah, our, our concern, I believe, at, at the first, when we changed this, this past year. It was, it seemed unfortunate in that if we would have moved further east, we were going to have silt coming in that we, that was going to be not managed. But it sounds like you two have started to make a plan, and your district is making a plan. And by the way, that fund that you're talking about setting up, I think, if, if you would be willing to share templates for that. I think that's something that probably, certainly my district would be interested in, and others around the lake as we shift our focuses. So, anyway.
I appreciate you bringing that up, Pam, because I know there was a specific reason about the sediment. I can't even remember, Frank might have even said something about our inability to move that line at the time, so anyway, I'll trust you guys, work it out.
We'll work on that, one of the initial thoughts was to move the entire line further to the east, which would actually reduce that vegetated buffer between the creek and the Solomon Harbor Point there. They're kind of wanting to curve it down a little bit, so the northern extent will remain in place. So you would still maintain that vegetated buffer, but you would open up some space further towards the land on the south there. So we'll work with Mike on that to come up what we're looking for and.
Yeah, we go, again, we had a great conversation, we talked about the culvert and, and how we're going to go through the culvert with. But, but we come west of the culvert and, and as Adam has said many, many times. We let that, that growth come up outside that culvert, and that'll filter the sediment as it comes back in. So it, it, it makes for a really good plan, and I, I appreciate the effort. That we, that we made yesterday and that we're going to make in the future, thank you.
All right, and finally, for the manager's report, the summary for Independence Day celebration. God, we caught a lot of heat from the, the public at large for not hosting viewing sites at the park. That was a recommendation from insurance. And with the, the reductions and not actually moving into a phase five, I think is a good call on our part.
There was about the fireworks, not about people not getting to see them, by the way.
Yeah, yeah, and while, while we had, there's no other shows there, so it would have been absolutely insane at the park. The show itself, though, I thought was awesome, we had really good feedback from the show. We actually hired two sheriffs to help my staff close down the park and turn people around. So that really made the day much easier to manage as far as people coming to the park. We did allow boats in, I don't even think we hit capacity on boat parking. But we did allow boats in, so the ramp remained open just after 4:00 PM, we didn't let people into the park for viewing from the shoreline. The cops cost us right about, I haven't got the final bill yet, it was about 45 bucks an hour per officer. I think it's right around $500 for how much we had them. Donation wise, just from the freeholders, we have received $8,560 as of yesterday. So we've made back the cost of the fireworks and the cost of the sheriffs that we utilized at the park entrance.
That's great.
So, so good to hear on that, that even without the, the park being open to the public, we still were able to recoup our funds. And as the fireworks guy said, if we get all our money back, he just wants to push us to $10,000.
Well, I have to, I have to tell a funny story in that I had to call, my family was sure someone died at the end of the show with the, the gas bombs that go off. So they said, you got to check about that, so Adam reassured me that that, that is part of the finale, a pretty spectacular part, so. I think they ask me the same thing every year, and every year I ask you again, because I forget.
Well.
You had something?
I just told Adam in a earlier meeting, maybe our budget meeting, because it was right after the fourth, but, you know, I was up late. And it took a long time for the boats to get off the water, I mean, a lot of people dropped their boats in just so they could see the fireworks in. It was a lineup.
Yeah, beautiful night, it was perfect, the rain held off, that was wonderful, well, nice job. That brings us to the second public comment section of the meeting, this is for the meeting in general. We've already dealt with public comment on the public hearing, a lot of public, public words. Before Alex or Adam take questions, I want to note, I believe Frank Van Overmaren is in the. Before Alex or Adam take questions, I want to note, I believe Frank Van Overmaren is in the audience, because he asked a question earlier. Frank, we do have your sewer project letter ready for you, a little cleanup of old business. I believe it's at the office. And I don't know if it needs my signature, Adam. If it does, I'll be down next weekend. I can certainly do that. So just letting you know, Frank, that that is ready for you. Sorry for the delay.
Yeah, I wish you'd have signed it, and then we'll get that out in the mail too. I figured we'd have you and myself sign it.
Okay, I should be able to do that late this week. All right, Alex, are you able to read questions to us? Are there any? Are people dozing off again or eating lunch?
So I can do it or Adam can do it, it's up to.
I can do it if you want me to. There's some discussion. If you have new questions, make sure to go ahead and type them in there now so we can get to it. Karen RJ, thanks and kudos to the whole board, Adam, Alex and the task force for excellent work. This is an ongoing, very difficult problem you have handled yourselves with skill and courtesy. Thank you, Karen. She'd also like to second the need for dredging at Point Idolon. Our little channel is over a foot lower now than it was in twenty sixteen. The next question from Rebecca Ball is, when will the second notice and or public hearing take place in relationship to the DNR Water Department for permit request? There will not be a second notice. That was the notice that went out. So the permitting process is playing out now, so we will not actually have another public hearing on those, those permits. And as of now, I do not see anything else popping in there, so I'm gonna go ahead and assume that that's all we got.
Okay, well, as, I, I really wanna thank you all. It's twelve, fourteen. That's much longer than we usually intend to go, especially on a Saturday. But we did keep this meeting on this date so we can keep on our timeline. And so we've accomplished that. I want to wish you all a great weekend, and I would call for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Mary Jane. A second? Les, thank you. It has been moved and seconded. Roll call vote for the last time today, Les?
I.
Mike Blackwell?
Hi.
Debbie?
Hi.
Mary Jane?
Hi.
And I, I too am an I. Motion carries. Have a great afternoon. Thank you all.
Great job, Adam. Good job.
Thank you.
All right, signing off.
Bye.